Good evening. Calling the Columbia County Board of Commissioners, September 5th meeting to order. Phil, bow your heads and open with an invocation. Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for any blessings you bestow, not only on Columbia County, greater Augusta region. Thank you so much for the law enforcement that Texas, for the DA that prosecutes those who violate the law, and for the judges who act for us. I pray now that you bless the rest of this meeting, give us wisdom. Christ's name, amen. Please stand for the pledge. Let the record show, we have a full quorum of commissioners. Commissioners, we have two sets of minutes in your package. The first from August 15th, millage rate public hearing. Got a chance to review them? And if that matters is, I'll accept a motion to do so.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the August 15th millage rate public hearing minutes as presented.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. As well, the August 15th Board of Commissioners meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the August 15th Board of Commissioners agenda, uh, meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Uh, the approval of an agenda. Mr. Johnson, we have under one item.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if you consider it, we have one item that we want to add. Item H1K, this is juvenile court independent contractor agreement. This was actually, it went through committee and it was added to the consent agenda, but it was left off the agenda that was printed. They asked that it be added back at this time.
Sir, you can consider it added. Thank you. Under presentations, I believe we have something from the Columbia County Fire and Rescue, is the chief here?
Yes, good evening. I could have all of you guys and, Etris, come on up. Oh. Well, this is always an honor and a privilege every year. The last week of May, the last two weekends of May, every year, our firefighters, over 160 of them, stand out for six days and solicit donations for us to distribute to organizations. And once again, we are benefiting the Burn Foundation of America and Columbia County Community Connections. It is just the best organizations that we've been partnering with for such a long time. We really believe in what we're doing in the community, obviously, and believe in it. I always say, there's no honor like someone just handing you cash and walking away knowing you'll do the right thing. It speaks volumes about these firefighters that are out there working it every day. So, um, I have checks for a little over $31,000 for each organization, so.
Yeah, guys, you know, I thank these guys all the time for what they do personally, but this is just a chance to do it publicly, not only for this, this is such a blessing and goes to direct patient services right over here at Doctor's Hospital. You know, and we try to do as much as we can with that, and it's such a gracious gift. But not only for that, but what they do every day. I say it all the time, if I ever get in trouble, you know, when these guys are out doing the boot drives, we try to go out and meet as many of them as we can, and we do that a lot, and it's a lot of fun for us. But having met so many of the great men and women that work for Columbia County Fire and Rescue, it makes me feel great, and I'm not joking, I have a fire hydrant on the corner of my lot, and I know that, I know I've got, I'm gonna get, you know, they're gonna get to me good, but they're all great people, and I appreciate what they do, not just this, but what y'all do every day and for our community. It's great, thank you.
How you guys doing? On behalf of Columbia County Community Connections, it's kind of a tongue twister. Well, we thank you, we thank you guys for everything you do for us and the community. Oh, not, like you said, not only this check, but everything you do every day, um, with our Dream Academy kids, you know, you guys have done for years, the Christmas toy drive and everything like that, and guys have came and sit in our Dream Academy restaurant, and it's just, see, the kids seeing you guys, seeing what you do, and just being present, and you know, everything that you do for us, whenever we call you, you're there for us. So we just thank you, continue this partnership for a long time.
These two organizations are so vital to our citizens and especially the children in this community. We've incorporated both of their organizations into our basic training. We go out and spend time with each firefighter medic, spends time and understands what these organizations do, and how they do it, all of us every day. Thank you again.
We have a proclamation for National Recovery Month, and Commissioner Couch is gonna read that.
We have Cindy Taylor with us and Tim Stevens, and I wanted to thank Chief Wallen for bringing the proclamation forward. And Chairman Duncan and I actually toured out at Serenity Behavior Health last week, so national experience, and we appreciate what you've done there. Whereas behavioral health is an essential part of one's overall and well-being, and whereas recovery from addiction occurs every day through a variety of recovery support services and treatment programs, and whereas millions of people across the United States are living happy, joyous, and free in long-term recovery, and whereas the 2023 Mobilize Recovery Across Georgia Bus Tour celebrates that recovery is real and recognizes that we are never alone on this journey through recovery, and whereas the Mobilize Recovery Across Georgia Georgia Recover Bus Tour will deliver 100 overdose aid kits to communities across Georgia to be accessible in local government buildings. Now therefore, the Columbia County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim, the month of September 2023 is National Recovery Month, and call upon the citizens of Columbia County to support this year's Recovery Month theme, Recovery is Real, with appropriate programs, activities, and ceremonies, signed and sealed this 5th day of September 2023.
Just wanna thank everybody, this is the first one that we're doing this year, and my hope is, is that this is gonna be an annual tradition, that not just Columbia County, but all of Augusta will get to participate and just celebrate recovery, and that people in recovery bring value to the community. Thank you.
Commissioners, you have the consent agenda in front of you. Each item on this agenda has been through the necessary committee and received the necessary votes to be placed on the consent agenda. If they still meet with your approval, I'll accept a motion, one motion to approve them all.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries. On to, Commissioner Skinner, you have the first.
Second.
This, this item and the next two, these are for addresses 2235, 2339, and 2341, they're all the exact same request. A major pud revision, the original pud required three lots to have slide-by driveways, which basically means the garage is behind the house, not front-facing. Note for that was on the front page of the plat. That was three pages, I believe. It was missed by the Architect's Review Board, it was missed by the applicant, and it was missed by our planner viewers. Houses were approved in these locations with front-facing garages. This amends the pud to allow those houses to remain for all three of these. Yes, sir. The, the note stating this, if you're packing, I believe, if you look at the front page of the plat, it was a tiny note in the top-left corner, I'm not sure if we have it on the screens or not. Um, that's page three of the plat, there's a page before that, just as busy, and then the, the cover page. Top-left corner had a note that stated the lots that had to have slide-by driveways. The new plat for the new sections has shaded lots where they're all shaded with different hatch patterns. Our viewers look at it, it jumps out that these lots are different from everything else. That's what, that's what we've done on this.
Who developed it? Who's building them?
Builder for the houses is Keith, he's here. The developer for the lots was Southeastern Development, so Southeastern Development did the original pud. Keith bought the lots, Keith is the one who's building the homes, question the pud revision for.
Where did the ball, where, where did we miss the baton? Where do we drop it?
I believe he added a, a second review also from the county, is that correct? Rest of the problem due?
So, so planning now reviewing these things, we have a staff member and planner view that's reviewing, we have Paul's group is reviewing. This morning, we talked about adding additional layers to our GIS system that, that pulls out certain data like this, if possible, we need to sit down with them, talk to them. We've got ideas of how to document this stuff.
Can we slide to the picture?
Yeah, Keith, that is, but how do we miss it?
Well, I, I missed it. I, I mean, I'll take full responsibility. I never look at the first page of the plat. We were told, we originally had our meeting, and actually, Mr. Richardson, in the first phase, it did happen, then they told us the only side-by garages were gonna be up against Wrightsboro Road, so of course, we thought those were the only ones, we buy these, we don't look at the plat. In my opinion, I missed it, I take full responsibility, I never look at the first page. But in my opinion, what can help us all out as a county, is if they will actually put it on the pages where those lot numbers are on the final plat, because with all that little writing on the first page, you can't see. And like I said, they told us, I got a call one day from the developer, Southeastern, and he said, why are you building these houses? I said, y'all said it was only on Wright, Wrightsboro Road, that's when I immediately picked up the phone, called Columbia County and said, I'm gonna... But, but no, none of us look at the front page, because there's so much fine print there, and like I said, if, if it were me, I think the easiest thing to do would be to put them on the actual lot numbers, when there are issues like an easement or something like that, we actually see it on that lot. I would just think that we would need to put them on the plat, but I take full responsibility. Developer, yep, they, and then, and they missed it.
They may have.
Yeah, Jonathan called me up when he was just riding in there, but it's like all of us, we're running so hard, none of us knew it, they didn't know it, but Jonathan, who actually, we deal with the real estate side of the architectural, they don't communicate, I don't think, Richardson, with the actual developer side, which would be Jonathan who runs that.
Any other questions?
Does that mean that these houses are closer together, since there's not a driveway in between?
No, absolutely not.
Setbacks don't change.
Change.
Setbacks are still there, however, there's no driveway property line on the house. Your point, they could be close together if the, since the driveway is not there.
And we're confident that this won't happen again?
Made the change, like I said, the next section, we made the changes, like Keith mentioned, it's actually on the lot, the lot is actually shaded to show that it's different than the rest of the lots versus a note on the front of the plat.
And if we were to say no to that?
Clear down and start over.
Thanks, Keith. I believe there's, have I read the motion right?
Yes, sir.
Motion's second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, the motion carries.
Next file, file RZ230802, I make a motion to approve the request for a major pud revision for property located at Tax Map 075, Parcel 171, to permit a front-load garage.
Second.
Same song, second verse. Any other questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Chair, we have one more of these, file RZ230803, I make a motion to approve the request for a major pud revision for property located at Tax Map 075, Parcel 170, to permit a front-load garage.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries. Baron, do you still have?
Yes, sir, we have one more, file RZ230804, I make a motion to approve the request for rezoning C2 and CC to C2 with a conditional use for retail package sales of distilled spirits for off-premise consumption, property located at Tax Map 024, Parcel 001.
Like a house to me.
I wish I had it, it's still there.
This is a convenience store slash bait shop, you remember this one from a year or so ago, was brought to us with buffer variances, this abuts some federal property. Uh, the buffers were to allow for a driveway to be installed, a gravel driveway to get to a drive-through bait shop. Uh, they also applied for an alcohol license for off-premise consumption, they were approved, however, they did not start using that license in the six months required, therefore their license... Their, their license was forfeited based on the time, but they have come back now, asking to zone the entire property to C2, it's split-zoned, um, C2 below that line, CC above that line, and since they were here last, we've made alcohol license for liquor stores a conditional use. Vote tonight is to convert the CC part to C2, give them a conditional use for a distilled spirit sales, off-premise consumption, they will then have to go through, if approved, they will then have to go through the alcohol licensing process, where you'll get to hear this again, raise your hand if you want them to have the license. Night is CC to C2, and conditional use for the liquor.
Have we heard?
Off-premise, nothing.
Correct.
Have we heard from any neighbors opposing the rezoning?
No, ma'am.
My question is, on the license part, him not exercising, concerns about trying to license his, not using them. Where that?
I would, I will say the staff will highly encourage him to be here when he makes his application for his license, so that we can make sure he's very clear on that, at that meeting.
This is the, only the second time we're dealing with this?
Correct, yes, sir.
I would assume that there wouldn't be a third. Motion is second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand. Carries.
Motion to approve updated residential street light district, safety lighting procedure.
Second.
Staff has been working on this for quite some time now, felt that it was time to update some of the requirements for streetlight districts, as well as hearing some concern from commission on, on the cost we were incurring for these districts. So, Mr. Titus has worked hard with his staff, went with this new residential streetlight district and intersection safety lighting procedure. The biggest changes I'll highlight are, an existing neighborhood follows the same process, I'm sorry, a, a new neighborhood will have to, less than 50% owned by individuals, so developer-owned, developer's gonna be required to pay the upfront cost for the installation. The way the current policy is written, developer comes in here with a petition, they're the sole owner, they provide the petition, as well as $60 per lot, we incur the cost to install, we incur the cost to maintain and furnish power. Two-way, the developer will be required to furnish, check to us to pay for the upfront installation.
If he wants it.
If, no, no, ma'am. We're gonna make them do that in all residential zoning except for RA, R1, or RA, R1A, and R1, right? R1, yep. So, if they're, if those, those are the larger lots, they're not required to, they can still follow the process, they're just not required to, so all R2 and above mandatory, you're going to put a streetlight district in, for an existing neighborhood, so I'm gonna throw Westlake out, this is not a, actual, Westlake is fully built out, if they were to come in and ask for a streetlight district, you're going to find the cost, follow the process, just like we would for anybody else, go through the petition. Difference is, their fee will be $100 per parcel, whereas the other fee is $60 per parcel. This extra $40 will be to go towards the upfront installation to recoup that cost. We won't recoup it all the first year, most likely, but over time, we'll recoup those costs, as well as the power and the maintenance of those lights. Other highlight that's big in this is that we actually put in some specifications, so how bright the lights are, how we space them out, placement at intersections, this is not the Wild West, it, here's the process, here's what you're gonna follow, make sure you meet our standards if you're gonna do that. Also provided a, a method of a neighborhood that put in their own streetlights, bringing those streetlights to us for our maintenance, so they'll have to bring them up to our code, make sure that they've paid off any kind of upfront costs that have not been satisfied. At that point, the county can vote to take over that district, pay for it out of our streetlight fund, impose the $60 tax. I think that's the highlights, I'd be happy to answer any questions I have.
But it does not change the current fees for folks who are D Street.
Correct, if you're, if you already, nothing changes.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
This is the first reading for this resolution that does lay out the actual tax assessment that we applied. See here, the two different assessments, one is for an existing subdivision, that's asking to have a streetlight district, and the other one is the $60 for a new development. Well, I want to point out that this did not go through committee, because we want to have this operational by October 1. Don't accept streetlight petitions until October 1st, we come off in May. Uh, we did have a lot of meetings with Vice Chair Richardson, as well as Commissioner Couch, concerning all this, so, um, we wanted to bring this to you, get it in front of you, so we can get this in place, so that we can start taking applications October 1.
Questions? Good work, thank you, appreciate what you guys did to get it here. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Do we, we do have one legal matter.
Yes, sir, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 23, barring the issuance of revenue anticipation certificate by the hospital authority.
Second.
Yeah, so anytime you have taxes in financing, you have to hold, the IRS requires you to hold a tougher hearing. Uh, that's just a opportunity for the public to hear what's going on, why, um, taxes are not being used, or, or not being collected in this financing. We had that hearing, no one, you know, from the public attended, so there's no objection. And again, this is for the, the bonds for the hospital. As a reminder, Columbia County only is backing 20% of those bonds, and only in the event that AUMC, Augusta Medical Center, Augusta University Medical Center, Augusta University Health Center Services, and Wellstar are not able to pay. At that point, all that has gone through, then county will be on the hook for 20% of those bonds.
I was actually really good working negotiations, by the way.
Thank you.
Well, don't, don't print that.
Partners.
He protected.
Protected our interests. He protected the interests of the taxpayers very well, thank you.
Thank you.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. No requests for review by committee, any public comments or participation? Any public? Uh, we have a few items in executive session, which I perceive we can deal with right here and now. Mr. Malir, I believe you have the first.
Yes, sir, I make a motion to approve promoting Ted Vasquez to manage your 3 grade 30 at an annual salary of $54,974.40 with a $1,440 phone allowance. Leandra McGee to manage her 1 grade 26 at an annual salary of $47,923.20 with a $1,440 phone allowance. Crystal Hill to supervise her 1 grade 14 at an hourly salary of $16.71 with a $720 phone allowance. Ethel Morris to supervise her 1 grade 14 at an hourly salary of $16.71 with a $720 phone allowance. Tressa Riley to supervise her 1 grade 14 at an hour salary of $16.71 with a $720 phone allowance. And moving of Jonathan Mosley to a trades worker 1 grade 14 at an hour salary of $20.47, and Stephen Kitchens to HVAC tech grade 21 at an hourly salary of $19.87 with a $720 phone allowance, and the facility maintenance department, effective with a pay period beginning September 10th, 2023.
Second.
Did you catch all that?
Did your parents invest in Evelyn Wood speed reading?
It's a lot, I wanna go home.
Worth the money. One breath. Any questions?
I will say, Mr. Chairman, this is a really good example of our management review committee working on these positions, and our management team working on these. We had a position that was vacated, instead of just filling that position blindly, we reorganized the department, made it more efficient, actually ended up cutting a position and saving the county money.
Good work, Scott.
It wasn't me, but I appreciate that.
Did the good work then.
Sir?
Who did the good work?
Well, Matt did the good work, and I think Chad did a lot of good work, and...
Chad had the idea, I just wrote it. He came to it with an idea, and we worked together.
He just read it.
We do have a culture, though, Mr. Chairman, of doing that.
I know you do. Any questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries, on to you, Commissioner Richardson, you can perform as well.
Second.
This is actually a sewer line that was built when the food line, the Columbia, food line that was constructed at Herford Farm Columbia Road section, called Sewer Line, that on the plat was to be deeded to the county, however, they never actually signed the deeds, so we're going back and getting them to sign the deeds and us taking the actual ownership of it.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries.
Second.
Donation to keep our, our project, our sewer project, getting the sewer out of Harlem into...
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand.
Second.
Getting close, then we're down about five left to get.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries.
About 245 to go on this one.
Gotta pick up your pace, son. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Leave that. Pass, only one more motion.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor, raise your right hand. We're adjourned. We're adjourned, thank you.